We have three minutes. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm on skin too, even. I do not, I just be from people, I just may unobstruct. My concern is that we have a gentleman that lives behind us that has dogs. They're in kennels. But the problem is that it smells, and it's not even summertime. And we couldn't even go outside if we wanted to and have a picnic. It depends on the way the wind blows. You know what I'm saying? And but also the fact is that those dogs were never let out. We're out in our yard a lot. So, I mean, and it's my, you know, just me saying, I think despite the dogs, I don't know that for sure, that it's inhumane for those animals to be in those kennels. Inhumane.
Can you give us your address so we know where that's located?
Six eighteen, Gordina Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes. My next door neighbor also, they called Amanda yesterday with the code enforcement. And she said there was nothing they could do. And so we, I mean, but he didn't understand it. Well, when he told me, I did not like that answer. So, I wanted to call somebody. So, I called Amanda, and she said, "There's nothing we can do about it." I said, "I don't understand that." You know, "You come over here and say it," you know what I'm saying? And so I said, "I'll get a hold of someone." So, I contacted Paul Birch, such a nice gentleman. He called me, and we spoke, and he said, "There is not anything you can do." I don't understand that. I know that code enforcement has been to the gentleman's house many a time. And his vehicle will be there, doesn't answer the door, or he's not there. Now, it was, I told her, I said, "If it was me, I'd just go knock on the door." But I said, "I don't know about these days, sometimes it might not be a good thing to do that." But I'm just concerned, that's just horrible. And it's, and so my husband was out there, and it stunk. He had one of those masks on. He said, "Hey, man, this is bad." And he said, "I got this. I've put a line on it. I'm sorry. We need to do something about the number of animals that are in yards. And people need to be accountable." I mean, if somebody called me and said, "Kim, we need you to do something about this issue," I would do it. I would be mortified if they were even calling me. You know what I'm saying? But I would take care of the issue. This gentleman is not going to do it. Hell. So, we need to have ordinance. Does that mean I'm done?
Thank you. I'm sorry it sounds like something off the average. Like you, Ryan. Okay, next on my list, we have Angel Lance.
I've failed speech, so I'm not a good speech.
Thank your name and address.
I'm Angel Lance from Alamo, Texas. I am a Rose Lawn owner. Do each of you like to spend your time on your backyard? We aren't. We can't. We don't enjoy it. It smells like dog feces. And with dog feces, there's flies. Dogs are barking at all hours. You can't sleep. You get no peace and quiet. And we have a huge problem with dogs in Rose Lawn. You know, Walmart's not that far away. They dump the dogs, and then they come in our yard. You know? They aren't chipped. You don't, they don't have rabies days. You don't know what diseases they carry. You don't know if they'll bite. There's kids outside playing all the time. They play basketball all the time. They're constantly putting the yard in that. You can't have that. It's dangerous. You don't know if these dogs are going to hurt the kids or us if we're out walking our dog, you know, just in our own yard. Animal Control tries to help, but they're limited by what they can do. They give them warnings. They bind them. But there's still 10-plus dogs in that backyard. When they back, when they bark, they all bark because they're pet animals. They bark for attention from the owner, or they hear someone like our South Southern backyard, and they bark. We need stricter ordinances. Houston has them, Ridge City has them, California has them, Florida has them. Why can't we have them? There are laws and ordinances for a reason. It's because somebody pushes it to the limit. Dog ordinances in Rose Lawn need to be changed. We need to hold the responsible parties accountable, whether it's the landowner or the tenant. If it was me, it would be both. Please take careful consideration to make our city better than what it currently is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I told you all it was gonna be good. All right, Mr. Todd Lance.
Same address, and it's about to the house of Brittany, that's kind of cat from your yard. And we've talked to the, you know, the animal control before. So, you can, you know, report from your yard, but you can't like report what's going on in their backyard. So, it's just... Nothing but 2:15, probably doing that all the time. You don't want to be, uh, uh, so I know I picked up on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lance. We have Marilyn Gatri.
Hi. Your name, my name's Marilyn Gatri. I live at 714 Livingston Street in Orange. And I wanted to say something about Livingston Park. You know, GT Polymers is here, and apparently the idea is to lay out a pipeline through the park. Okay, you know, that's fine. I love the park. I love Orange. And I understand development, but I just real, I want to express that Livingston Park is a gem. It's a gem for Orange. It's a gem for this region. There's very unique habitat in this park of Orange, all right? You, I don't know, I think people do try to treasure it. But I just want to emphasize that Livingston Park is something, it's kind of old, it's kind of tucked back. It's very important to the neighborhood. Kids in the neighborhood use it every day. We take ten walks in it every day. It's fabulous for wildlife. And I just want, like, Orange to appreciate that, which I think they do. So, when, after this pipeline is probably laid out by this front, we have a small group at the invitation of Adam Jack to consider conservation or what we could do with the park that would make it beneficial to the community. It's a natural environmental conservation gem for this community. And we've got an art group, I'm a Texas Mastinator, so we've got representatives from Golden Temple, Audubon Society, and the Master of Art in Orange. And we all agree, this is fabulous for wildlife, fabulous for birding, and fabulous for the community. And I just want you guys to appreciate it because there's a good chance that not everybody here knows Livingston Park because it's tucked back off the main track, and it's a beautiful, yeah, it's fabulous.
Is it in the cove?
Yeah, it's in the cove, yeah, you know, and it's hidden away, but it's kind of overgrown in some places. And it's a fabulous park, and with just a little bit of development, it can be a real draw for Syria. Birds like to spend money, and I don't, people will go far to see great birds, and this park has them, all right? So, you've got people from all over the country going down to Sandy Woods, which is 50 miles down the road. This is, I really want it for the local community, but what I'm saying is that it's got so much potential that we don't even realize it with just a little bit of investment in it. So, I just want us to take care of it, that's all. And I want to share a few pictures of some birds. These are not my photographs. I'm not a good photographer. But there's, I've, I've established seen over 120 birds in the park, and I'm not the best birder. Jared Kelly over there is a great birder from Yonah. There's other people who would see much more. But I see, I walk five minutes in the park, and I see this. So, I don't know if anyone's a birder either. But we've got these, you know, of course, you guys know the Cardinals, and you love them at the time. Of course, you know the Eagles, you know, but there's fabulous resources right here in Orange.
Thank you. Okay, we, next we have Kelly Kayes.
Hi, my name is Kelly Kayes, UVM, and I'm a veterinarian. My address is 46718 H10 East in Weney, Texas. From, I have a handout to give everybody. I'll introduce myself first. From 2016 to 2020, I was a veterinarian for the city of Beaumont. During that time, I wanted to improve. I started a nonprofit, Beaumont Pets Alive, in 2018. And we were able to establish Beaumont as a no-kill city in 2019, last month of 2018 and 2019. And that's brought a lot of benefits to the city of Beaumont. I have a handout y'all can pass down. Let's do a little bit of summarize. I'm here today because Beaumont Pets Alive, the nonprofit, and executive director of, applied last year for a grant from a national organization called Best Friends. It's the Rachel Ray Grant that we applied for. We applied for it because Azur, a CO, had wanted to do something to save some lives in the city of Orange, and had reached out to me because I've been televised with Port Arthur. And so, I began to work with him, and I used that information and letter of support from the city of Orange. And we were awarded, last week, a formal notification, a $31,000 grant for the city of Orange. Part of your packet is going to show how the funds are allocated. Then you're going to say, "What is a no-kill city?" And no-kill city means nine out of 10 animals that are taken in by the city are released alive. And currently, the numbers in 2021 was 47% of the city of Orange were coming out alive. In '22, it was only a 39% live release rate. And in '23, it was a 49% live release rate. So, we have a long way to go, it begins at 90%, but it's doable. And the way that you do it, very briefly, is you get all the animals healthy that are coming into the shelter, vaccinating and deworming them, and then rescues come in and fool the animals. That's the number-one way to get them out of that pit, is the rescue to come. Nation them all over the country and kill them at these go services. But we have to, we have to have it where we can be caretaker and vaccinate the intake. So, that's an ordinance change for that. And then also, the biggest thing that saved them in Beaumont is they started to attract their early release program. Where all the feral cats, they trapped them. Instead of just euthanizing them, they spayed or neutered them and checked them for diseases, dewormed them, and then turned them right back where they came from. It stopped the nuisance problem and the spraying of urine and the littering, and so it became beneficial. And they've seen a huge decrease in the cats in their shelters and massive improvements. So, I, my goal of this conversation is to follow up and you to be appointed on your animal advisory committee to help, because I can bring the resources of all the ordinance we changed in Beaumont and make those changes. So, your packet has some further information since my time of service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? If not, we will move on to city announcements, Mr. Pools, Ms. Miss Williams.
Hello, mayor and council. A friendly reminder, the second annual spring break shootout, jet ski races event is planned for Friday, March 15, and Saturday, March 16, at the city of Orange Boat Ramp and Riverside Pavilion. Events will begin at 10:00 a.m. and include jet ski races, PJ Music, a kiddie zone, and food truck vendors. We anticipate a fantastic event that we hope will attract a large turnout. Thank you.
Did you say the 13th and the 16th?
The 15th and the 16th.
15th, thank you.
Okay, on to item six. Consider a motion against acceptance of the certification of unopposed candidates or other political subdivisions not accounted. Ms. Poole.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, the city secretary's office is presenting several items in order to cancel the city's general election. Our office presented an order at the January 23 council meeting, giving notice of the May 4, 2024 general election with positions of mayor-at-large and council member place one, single member district one. Both places are three-year terms. Mayor Larry Spears Jr. filed for reelection with place of mayor-at-large, and Matt Chandler filed for council member place one, single member district one. The filing and write-in deadlines have expired, and both gentlemen are unopposed. They will be presented their certificate of election and take their oath of office after the May 4 general election. Staff asked you to approve this motion acknowledging acceptance of the certification of unopposed candidates. And Tricia, I would like to wish Larry and Matt congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Poole.
I can make the motion, perfect.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
And Ms. Hennington? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Poole. Okay, item seven. Consider a resolution of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, canceling the May 4, 2024 general election of the city of Orange, Texas, as permitted under section 2.053A of the Texas Election Code. Ms. Poole.
This resolution is ordering the cancellation of the city of Orange 24, 2024 general election, and we ask that you approve this resolution.
Okay, any questions or comments? We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Poole. Okay, on to item eight. Consider agenda February 13, 2024, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine A. Consider ordinance abandoning the surface only of a portion of the alley located west of Moss Avenue, south of the former right-of-way for Dakota Street, and north of Campus Street, described as hall effect certain tract in Orange County, Texas, and being in the Alexander Calder survey, abstract number 56, and being part of that certain tract known as Block Three, shown on the subdivision Black David Blaine's edition of Orange, and being recorded in volume one, page 21, of the map records of Orange County, Texas, repealing all ordinance in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings thereto, providing inseparability clause, and providing an effective date. The first reading was February 13, 2024. Mr. Knoll.
This is the second reading of this ordinance abandoning the surface only of this alley. We don't see any funding for the city to hang on the surface.
Are any questions or comments from Mr. Knoll? We have a motion question? We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
And Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item nine B. Consider ordinance abandoning the surface only of a portion of the right-of-way from Campus Street formerly known as South Street, described as hall of that certain tract in Orange County, Texas, and being in the Alexander Calder survey, abstract number 56, and being a part of that certain tract known as South Street, shown on the subdivision Black David Blaine's edition of Orange, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings thereto, providing inseparability clause, and providing an effective date. The first reading was February 13, 2024. Mr. Knoll.
The city staff doesn't see the need for the city to continually retain ownership of the surface of this section of Campus Street.
All right, any questions or comments from Mr. Knoll? Question? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
And Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine C. Consider ordinance abandoning the surface only of a portion of the right-of-way for New York Street, described as hall of that certain tract in Orange County, Texas, and being in the Alexander Calder survey, abstract number 56, and being a part of that certain tract known as New York Street, shown in the subdivision Black Gilmore's second co-edition, and being recorded in volume three, page 20, of the map records of Orange County, Texas, revealing all ordinance in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings thereto, providing inseparability clause, and providing an effective date. The first reading was February 13, 2024. Mr. Knoll.
The city staff doesn't see the need for the city to continue owning the surface only of this section of New York Street.
Okay, any questions or comments from Mr. Knoll? Knoll, do you have a motion question? Okay, we have a motion in a second and a third. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
And Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knoll. And for those who don't understand, when it says abandoning the surface only, if somebody wants to strike oil, that's ours, right? Animal rights. Okay, so don't strike oil. Here we go. Item nine D. Consider ordinance abandoning the city of Orange, Texas Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Animal Control, Article 2.200, Dogs and Cats, Section 2.104, definitions and adding section 2.206, Animal Ownership Limitation, relating to limiting the number of dogs and cats per residence, providing a building clause, providing an effective date, and other matters. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and council, the ordinance amendment being presented before you is to promote responsible pet ownership in the city. The ordinance includes provisions covering number limitations, exemptions, enforcement, and an effective date. For your reference, other city ordinances in surrounding areas have limitations in place, currently have limitations in place, ranging between three to five dogs and cats per residence. Would you consider a motion?
To be clear, ours is fine, or they're...
Yes, we're recommending that.
Okay, so let me, go ahead.
Does this include, like, breeders that are, are, you know, breeders for, for a limit? They actually have that as a business and...
Breeders are by law controlled by the Texas Department of License and Registration. And it was just a change of the law affected September 1, reducing the number of animals that are required to be considered greater from 11 to five. So, that's controlled by the Department of Licensing and Registration. And in, I believe, the draft, the ordinance, first reading, shows that that is an exclusion for the control of those would be by the state and not by the local ordinance.
But that have to prove that they're licensed.
They have to have a license through the state.
All right, thank you.
So, this would give our animal control officers the power to do what these people are asking, right? To reduce, when there's 10 dogs in the yard, that's not a registered breeder that's registered with the state. That gives our officer the power to actually, it's not to say...
So, are there no brand mother cases hanging?
Again, if, if somebody says they have more than, than the five, we're going to ask our animal control department to get with them to work on the orange. We're not, again, if they go in there and seize their animals or anything like that, we're going to ask the two parties to work together.
Yeah, well, just give him the power to work with him.
So, will there be in the ordinance, will there be maybe some time limits on how long?
We did not, we purposely did not write that in there. We weren't trying to legislate how long someone could keep that, that would be between animal control officer and that person.
It's a bigger subject, but once again, your animal control officer, it's, it's a health and safety issue that I, in my, I do, I mandate that they are going to work with, um, pet owners, but do it in a manner that those aren't created a health and safety issue.
Okay. We don't want it to just be open-ended, where it can just go on forever. There's got to be some kind of...
Right, but just like other codes violations, you know, we're, all the time, we work with the department or the tenant to try to get them to comply.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, but before I take the vote, so I'm looking at the, um, the ordinance that you've put together for us, the staff has put together. And so, just to be clear, section 2.206, if you scroll down to page 34, uh, section 2.206, can we scroll down for them on the TV? Is that possible? No, it's way down there, page 34. Let's, let's all read it together, that way we get, we get some clarity before we all carry the T V monitor.
Mayor, if I may, again, we're just admitting our current...
Right, I just want to read it real quick.
Sure.
You should have put it as page one, though. I'm almost there. Keep going, one more page, one more page. 2.206, keep going a little bit more. Right there, okay, here we go. So, section 2.206, limitation on number, it reads that, "No owner shall keep or harbor more than five dogs and/or cats combined at a single residence." Number two says that puppies or kittens under the age of four months shall not be counted towards the limit. However, upon reaching the age of four months, the puppies and kittens shall be included in the count, and the owner must adhere to the five-animal limit per residence. The exemptions are, "This limitation shall not apply to licensed animal shelters, veterinary clinics, or registered breeders, as defined by the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, operating within the legal requirements. Individuals recognized as fanciers, or fanciers, who are actively involved in recognized breeding or exhibition organizations, may apply for an exemption from the limitation by submitting relevant documentation to the animal control officer. Exemptions will be granted based on compliance with established breeding standards and ethical practices. The individual is registered as a bona fide rescue entity or foster family, in which case the maximum number allowed would be 10 adult dogs and/or cats in any combination." The enforcement is, the city of Orange Animal Control Officer is authorized to enforce this ordinance. Violation may result in fines, warning, and punishment of excess animals, or other penalties outlined in the animal control ordinance. Penalty is whoever shall violate or cause to be violated, any provision of this section shall, upon conviction therefore, be punished as provided in the general penalty provision found in section 2.310 of the city of Orange Code of Ordinances. This ordinance shall become effective upon the second and final reading. So, there we go, we got it. And then people also need to continue to work, because my main concern is, is if someone has 10 dogs, and then we're limiting them to five, as Ms. Kelly stated, Kay, I'm sorry, um, sorry, I took my glasses off. Stated, um, we're not wanting to get rid of those dogs. We need to make sure we have some place for those dogs to be rescued or adopted. So, we don't want to go and cut someone from 10 to five, and then now our rate of 47% is, you know, lower. We want to, so let's make sure we continue to work with the entities that, that are here to make sure we can do something more for the city. Because I don't want it to turn into, now we're just exposing the animals. See what I'm saying? Okay, all right. So, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, item 10A. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Marketing Alliance for videography and still photography footage for marketing-related projects and to implement a branding project for the city of Orange, Texas, in the amount... to implement a branding project for the City of Orange, Texas, in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand eight hundred fifty. Ms. Claire.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I brought my notes, so I won't do anything else. Um, through the years, Orange has been called the gateway to Texas, as we're the first city to welcome travelers and businesses alike to the state of Texas. Strategically located on the Supreme River in the Interstate ten corridor, we have access to the interstate, railways, waterways, and an airport, offering opportunities for commercial, retail, and industrial capital investments for businesses big and small. Orange has also been described as a place with small-town charm and rural-class culture, referencing our warm hospitality and wonderful attractions found here, including, to name a few, art and history museums, community theaters, the state-of-the-art Performing Arts Theater, a historic district with beautiful architecture and historical churches, homes, and landmarks, a botanical garden, restaurants serving up local flavors and cuisine, a winery, parks and outdoors, and a recreational river for fishing, boating, and kayaking, live music, a sports recreation center, community events hosted by local organizations, and event venues where free city events are held regularly. As locals, we're proud of our community, and we're aware of all Orange has to offer. It's nice to be around it every now and then, and have the good fortune of experiencing it right here in our own backyard. So, now, a committee of city staff is working to implement a marketing initiative that promotes the live, work, play lifestyle of Orange to attract visitors and businesses to the City of Orange. After contacting multiple marketing agencies for services and pricing, we found that Marketing Alliance is best-fitting targets. They're a leader in economic development and tourism marketing, provide creative branding and video production, and work primarily with municipalities of our size, advance communities in business development and tourist attraction. The project will include a brand identity package and video production consisting of multiple high-quality videos, still photos, and drone footage of foreign currency assets to be used by the CBB, the EDC, and the City of Orange in general, on the website, mobile boards, social media, ads on streaming platforms, and other future marketing initiatives. The total cost for this project upon completion is twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, to be funded by the CBB advertising budget, and staff suggests moving forward with Marketing Alliance to produce some thought, and I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. That sounds wonderful. Happy to hear that.
Yeah.
So, people will be happy to honor it. Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Great question.
All right. We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Claire. Item ninety-ten B. Consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Golden Drive Homewares Company, LLC, in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy, for an easement across city property in Livingston Park, Livingston Street, and Alabama Street. Mr. Chad.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Um, I am pleased to bring this agreement forward to you. It's, uh, in process with GT Homewares to install an industrial discharge line, uh, from the area of Livingston Park and across Alabama Street near Port Authority to the Seine River. Uh, the fluid carried by this pipeline is, um, in Arc. It's regulated by EPA, it's also regulated by TCDQ, uh, for safe discharge to the river. It's, and there's anyone who might come and contact you. Uh, we've had the pleasure of working with Chad Jennings, uh, the plant manager from GT Homewares, as well as more inherent in on this agreement, uh, to install this pipeline. Uh, this agreement, uh, will allow them to impact about seven acres of property, uh, in the vicinity of the Cove Water Tower, uh, in the wooded areas, uh, clearly there's wooded areas to install this pipeline. It would include tray removal, the installation of pipeline, and then restoration of the area back to a grass-type area. In compensation for that, GT Homewares will be paying the city three hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, which includes a hundred and seventy-three thousand for the easement, about seventeen thousand for temporary workspace, ten thousand for a temporary access road, um, like, as Ms. Gidry, uh, related to a little bit earlier, uh, we see Livingston Park as a jewel, I mean, add its value, but we can do something with it. So, as a result, GT Homewares agrees also provide a thousand, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for repurposing the park. Uh, we have started a community group with Dr. Gidry, uh, with the Texas National Astronautist, as well as the Big Picket Biosphere, uh, to help us plan what that repurposing tour, Livingston Park will look like, and use those rest, rest of the positive thoughts. Uh, in fact, staff recommends approval of this agreement.
All right. Any questions or comments? Very, very happy to hear this update. Um, I know Ms. Ms. Gidry gave us some very important information, and, um, I'm very happy to hear that not only are we able to work with GT Homewares to establish a pipeline, but we're also able to restore and make that area a, a bright space for the birds and for other people that want to go and watch the birds and enjoy. So, thank you, GTP, for setting the example for others to follow. We appreciate that.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add, a bit of a counsel, you know, that wastewater effluent is treated wastewater, so it has been chlorinated and dechlorinated, and the quality under EPA or TCDQ standards of this, we call it wastewater effluent, but it's water running into that portion of the volume is better than the water quality that it is going into. Uh, so, effectively, wastewater effluent is now being recommended for reuse by industrial companies, or processed water, or other matters that many of us are familiar with, but it can also be reprocessed for many purposes. So, the land will be buried underground, they will have what I would call is minimal surface. They simply have some air relief valves on the surface, but otherwise, it will be a pipeline buried, and will be completely, uh, submerged.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. All right. We have a motion.
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chad. On to item eleven A. Consider a motion approving the resignation of Devon Williams from the CBB Advisory Board effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Trey Anne.
Yes, so, Mayor and Council, approximately a month ago, Ms. Williams accepted a newly-created position as part of the staff with the Mission of Business Bureau's Deputy Director. So, as a result, now that she's part of the staff, she will still remain engaged from a tourism-related perspective, but we did need to go ahead and formally approve her resignation as an advisory board member, and permanently serve as part of the CBB staff. You'll see right behind it, we've taken action, and we're ready to fill that position. We'll just take them one at a time. If you don't mind, I will accept the resignation. Make the resignation. Then we'll go to the next. I'll turn it back.
Okay. So, we have a motion. We have a motion. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Trey Anne? Can we have a motion?
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
And Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. No, I'm just, just playing. All right. Eleven B. Consider a motion approving the appointment of Lacy Gibbons to the CBB Advisory Board effective February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, for a two-year term ending February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-six. Mr. Trey Anne.
Yes, so, Mayor, as I just mentioned, we do have a poll of action items in which Ms. Lacy Gibbons hasn't been involved in terms of tourism-related events, representing Dow slash United Way in the past. So, we're very thankful to have her with us tonight, so, to your approval of this formal motion, if we can just take a minute with you, Mayor, we have Allison, we'd like to get a pick in front of the seal, and so we can push it out and create awareness. So, I'll turn it back.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. Trey Anne? And do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbons.
I know those positions don't pay. All right. On to item eleven C. Consider a motion authorizing the, oh, this is a good one. Consider a motion authorizing the Orange County Mosquito Control District to fly low altitudes and park in the mayor's driveway, as required for the application of insufficence for the abatement of mosquitoes within the limits of the City of Orange, Texas. Mr. Coons.
That's why I present this. But again, uh, you know, as we do annually to the, you know, Orange County mosquito control, to fly low levels, treat those mosquitoes.
Yeah. And I'm going to make a motion, second. Here we go. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbons.
I know those positions don't pay. All right. On to item eleven C. Consider a motion authorizing the, oh, this is a good one. Consider a motion authorizing the Orange County Mosquito Control District to fly low altitudes and park in the mayor's driveway, as required for the application of insufficence for the abatement of mosquitoes within the limits of the City of Orange, Texas. Mr. Coons.
That's why I present this. But again, uh, you know, as we do annually to the, you know, Orange County mosquito control, to fly low levels, treat those mosquitoes.
Yeah. And I'm going to make a motion, second. Here we go. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Oh.
You don't know? Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. All right. Item eleven D. Consider a motion canceling the joint election agreement, services contract with the Orange County Elections Administrator. Ms. Paul.
Yes, Mayor and Council, since the city was able to cancel the May Fourth of twenty-twenty-four general election, we need to cancel the joint election agreement contract with the county, uh, the Orange County Elections Administrator, and, uh, staff asked that you participate in this.
Make a motion, second.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Paul. Item eleven E. Consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation financial report for the quarter ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Zito.
Yes, so, this is just a motion acknowledging receipt of the report that I presented earlier.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. I know you don't think you're wrong. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item eleven F. Consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation investment report for the quarter ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Zito.
So, this is the motion acknowledging the report that I presented earlier.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments?
Question.
Do we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Take motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item eleven G. Discussion and possible action regarding prioritizing fiscal year two thousand twenty-four street rehabilitation projects. Mr. Jack.
Yes, Mayor. Um, last year, as we went through budget development and approval, uh, we had allocated four hundred thousand dollars to, to street rehabilitations throughout the city. And at the time, it shows you a very lengthy list of projects that needed to be done, which far exceeded the four hundred thousand dollars within budget. This presentation will walk you through those projects and their conditions, and give you a recommendation from the public works staff as to which projects we believe that we should do this year. So, if you will take a look at the monitor, these were the projects that were in the budget deliberations last year, approximately three point seven million dollars of rehabilitation. Uh, this is not new asphalt or rubber, this is rehabilitating basically a star and chip road as it exists today, um, back to the same type of cer- surface. Uh, eight projects here, uh, in, in this case, not without a border. So, I'll walk you through each project, um, I'll, each slide here for each project, there'll be a photograph in the middle of the edition, a map on the right, indicating approximately where the project is, and I'll walk, explain some of the conditions. This is Twenty-seventh Street, uh, from Clark Lane and Ellen Road, that's about a mile. It is considered a feeder, that is, it connects two state highways, um, in one way shape or form. Uh, its current condition is ranked three out of ten. There are twelve entrances, driveway entrances, along this section, which is one of the four in the mile. The next project is Bearcat Drive, is in the northern portion of the city, chasing to, uh, Coliseum High School. Uh, it is also a feeder, it's twice as long as Twenty-seventh Street, well over a half mile. Condition four out of ten, and there's seventeen entrances along that stretch of, stretch of roadway. And you can see the deterioration, particularly on the left side of the road versus the right side of the road. The left side is primarily the outbound side going towards State Highway Eighty-Seventh. Burge, Clark Lane, which connects to Twenty-seventh Street, it's a half mile, it's also a feeder, five out of ten, it's condition, it's near Interstate ten. Uh, Clark and Twenty-seventh, it serves as cut-throughs between Deeks and the theater road along Interstate ten that lies westbound. There are twenty-four entrances along this stretch of roadway. Gloria Drive in Eaton Point area of the city, is considered a collector because it does run all the way back through the backside of communities. Um, third of a mile here, within the development area, uh, rated a five out of ten, you can see some water damage there. Uh, there are eight entrances currently with more under consideration of development of Eaton Point project. Twolane Road, uh, this is the only road in the city that we've rated one out of ten, which is the worst condition. That's what I'm saying. Potential. I'll see the conditions there. Obsoles throughout. It is a feeder, it connects again to state highways. There are seven entrances along this road. We currently have some construction going on out there along with Sabina River and Florida. West Valley Inn from Fox Run Apartments out to MLK, that's a mile and a half. Lots of development going on out there right now. It is also considered feeder. It is two, condition of two out of ten, it's been practiced near the MLK section. There are forty entrances along that mile and a half of road. White Oak Road from Alacan to the city limits, about a mile long. It's a local road. It doesn't serve any through movement. It serves just residents that are out there. Rated as a three out of ten. And quite a number of entrances, thirty-five entrances on White Oak Road in that stretch. Last but not least, Womack Road, which is over near sixty-two. This one is also a feeder, it tends to allow it along there to state highways. If you recall, when the state started work on Interstate ten, they did repave half of Womack Road. And this is the remaining half north of the road that is of construction activities. Rated four out of ten. You can see the alligator cracking occurring. There are only three entrances along this stretch of road. So public works staff took this and we ranked these, all these roads on the basis of class, length, condition, number of entrances per mile, and other conditions such as is their development in the area? Are there, are their schools in the area? So this is the recommended ranking of the roadways. We suggest, our recommendation to you is to do one and a half of twolane road. Likely, you can choose whichever half. Do one half of twolane road at about four million dollars. And then do Twenty-seventh Street, four hundred eighty-five thousand. There were three roadways, you can see three A, three B, and three C. They were all very, very, very close. The reason we chose Twenty-seventh, the dollar figure looked good and fitting what remained after two twenty-nine. It's a feeder, so it handled through traffic. And there were quite a number of entrances per mile along Twenty-seventh Street. Again, we have four hundred thousand dollars. And I would, if you have any questions that you have. No, it's three point seven million dollars is the one.
Well, I'm all for your ranking there.
Yeah. You're in all of them.
So are you all comfortable with the staff's recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we also spoke IGTP up there. Got that three point three million floors? Thank God we canceled that election first, huh? No, thank you, staff, for putting this together. No, depending on which areas the council represents, I know everybody would like to see something in their area. I know Twolane is a war zone.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you live on it, so. But yes, I think it's great. But I mean, I don't know, do we have to make a motion here?
Just say you accept this staff's recommendation.
Okay, do we accept staff's recommendation, not a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Burge? Ms. Henning?
Aye.
Motion passes. I ain't voting. Motion passes.
I think all want to say except for Davey's.
Yes. All right, on to item twelve, city manager report.
Do you have anything else to add?
Okay, item city council report starting at my left. Ms. McKenna?
Just want to thank everybody for being here. Totally exciting to have, have a room full of people. So come as often as you want, we love to have you here. And go vote. You have half an hour, so I voted this morning, so go vote.
I thank you, Ms. McKenna. Mr. Childs?
Would you call me a while ago, though?
What'd I say, Mr. Burge?
Something else.
Excuse me, it's David.
Congratulations, Mayor, it's urgent, I'm having a conference this year.
Took me five times.
It took you five times for your project.
Finally.
Also, I want to thank staff for quick response this weekend on a sur problem. It was amazing, working place there. Thank you, Jack and Mike, for taking the hose on weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Childs. Ms. Henning?
Happy, thank you for the same exact thing. It was worth it, and I owe the weekend, thank you. And the report, but thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Henning. Mr. Burge?
Yes, I want to thank all of you guys for coming. Your voices were heard. Congratulations, speakers. Mr. Bender, that's back there. I do want to speak about, a constituent called me about another ordinance that we have to look into, and that is God's own chains. I do know that Texas passed that in twenty twenty, and we have not revisited that ordinance to make it in our city. So I said I would bring it up. So I'm bringing it up. We'll look into it. Mr. Bailey?
We even don't talk to him like that, huh?
Thanks.
I agree with everything that my fellow council should have. Congratulations, Matt, Mr. Mayor. The only thing that I will bring up, has, has studies been completed on speed on twolane?
Well, yes, it's his comments, but I had allowed you just to comment, he not respond, and get with the others. But they're gonna go faster once we repay it.
Anyway, thank all of you for coming. It's always been, I've had a cool room here. Thank you for coming, your voice will hurt.
All right, so before we come closer, I did want to say thank you to everyone as well. Thank you to GTB for being here. Thank you for those who, Ms. Lacy that was appointed. Thank you to our veterans. I had a chance to speak with Mr. Seid yesterday. We have a little project we're gonna try to work on with the VFW. Save our VFW. We have our veterans that do so much for us, and the VFW is in need of so much, needed repairs. So definitely gonna work with him on that.
And our community.
And our community. Thank you for those who are here. Thank you for the Womack Pets Live. Thank you for dog lovers and everyone that's a part of this. It's, it's, I just want you to understand, like, please know that every day there's twenty thousand issues at hand. And it's not that animals are not important. It's just that by the time I hear about AT&T phones not working, energy losing power, mosquitoes, it's like you somehow, you know, you don't hear about every little thing. But when you come before us, it helps to bring it to the forefront. And as you can see, we care and we want to do what is right. Also, congratulations to my brother up there, Matt. And I'm very excited, as, thank you for those who have wished me well. I've been doing this since I was thirty-three. This is my tenth year of being involved. This is my last, this was my last reelection, so I have, this is my last term. It's been a blessing to be able to do God's work with such amazing people. However, as like Michael Jackson's final thing, this is it. So let's, let's finish it with a bang. Good night, guys. Well, thank you for the thought, for that, yeah. I think my wife will be happy more than anyone. All right, so let's go to the, we're gonna go to executive session. We have some very, very important things to cover. We have an addendum. So item thirteen A, deliberation with City Preserving of Texas Chapter five five-one of the government code regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as authorized by Texas Government Code, Section five five-one point zero seven-two, regarding the purchase of real property at fourteen eleven Simmons Drive, Orange, Texas. We also have deliberation and consultation with city attorney regarding property at forty-four oh one Kitty Chapin Avenue of Orange, Texas. And that's it at this time. So you can go vote and hang out. Hopefully, there's no mosquitoes, and we will reconvene when we're done with this.
Can I ask Kelvin speaking state?
Yes. Take action as this is regarding item thirteen A one or thirteen A two. So on thirteen A one, we will have a definite motion to allow you to negotiate, or no? We don't have any motion for thirteen A one or thirteen A two, do we have a motion to